Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb? Mark Ham?
Here.
Lynn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number two is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B is receive the minutes of the special planning commission meeting held June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item C is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held July the ninth, two thousand nineteen. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars, fifteen cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, in the amount of two million, four hundred fifty-three thousand, twenty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. This is a consent docket, so would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb? Mark Ham? Lynn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider adopting resolution number nine-three-one-nineteen, calling, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of said city the question of authorizing an additional one-eighth of a cent percent sales tax and providing for the use thereof and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Mayor and council, the Cleveland County currently has a quarter cent sales tax that will expire March thirty-one, twenty twenty. They will have paid off their jail bonds early. The county will be going out for an addition, for a one-eighth cent sales tax, and this proposal for the city, one-eighth cent sales tax, is not tied to the counties in any way. So they could both pass, both fail, one pass, one fail. If council approves, this will go to the voters, and these funds will be used for water, water line replacement, leak detection technology, modifying City of Moore water wells, increasing production resulting in a potential savings of seven hundred thousand dollars annually from Oklahoma City water purchases, smaller drainage projects, and then give us funding to help with compliance with our DEQ compliance plan. You've received a presentation in previous council meeting and had other discussions. Our legal counsel Terry Hawkins is here to answer any questions about the ballot measure, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And to be clear, this, if this were to pass, and the county wanted were to pass, the sales tax rate in Moore would remain the same. It would not be an increase.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item?
And just a clarification, we are motioning and approving this to go to the voters, for the voters to decide.
For the voters to decide.
Correct.
Correct.
I want to make sure everybody was clear.
Okay, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
No.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
No. Item carries. Item number four is consider approval of ordinance number nine-two-two-one-nine, amending the City of Moore, Oklahoma, sales tax ordinance, ordinance number six-zero, as amended by ordinance number three-three-one-eight-three, as amended by ordinance number four-seven-oh-eight-eight, as amended by ordinance number five-five-one-oh-six, as amended by ordinance number six-seven-seven-one-zero, as amended by ordinance number seven-five-two-twelve, as amended by ordinance number seven-oh-eight, or excuse me, seven-eight-oh-fourteen, as amended by ordinance number eight-two-nine-sixteen, as amended by ordinance number eight-eight-eight-eighteen, to provide for the levying and assessing of an additional one-eighth of a percent sales tax upon the grocery receipts or proceeds derived from all sales taxable under the sales tax law of Oklahoma, fixing the effective date providing for the purpose of said additional sales tax and making provision severable and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Mayor and council, this is just a companion item for the previous item, recommend approval.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
No.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
No. Item carries. Item number five is consider approval of an agreement with Jeff Cloud, P L L C, for legal services. This is from management.
Mayor and council, this is agreement with Mr. Cloud to provide legal services for actions of the Corporation Commission. Mr. Cloud is here to answer any questions, if you have any. Recommend approval.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like maybe on the record a description of what services he's offering and maybe more background for everyone that's present, as well as the minutes.
Sure. There, there's currently in state statutes provision that railroad companies are supposed to assist cities in grade crossings. There are certain criteria of safety and other things that have to, have to do with that. Mr. Cloud has approached me and approached the council and feels like the circumstances of the City of Moore would require BNSF to help contribute to funding for our underpass project. So this would be an action that would be filed at the Corporation Commission to be heard by an administrative law judge there and then ultimately voted on by the Corporation Commissioners.
And the deal is if he doesn't win for us, we don't pay, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But in the end, if he wins, could say the taxpayers a lot of money.
Yes.
Yeah, the statute, I believe, says fifty percent, so in a twenty-eight million dollar project, we're potentially talking about fourteen million dollars, which would be a tremendous savings for our taxpayers.
And we'd be expecting about twenty percent of total recovery on Mr. Cloud's services.
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is receive a report from select actuarial and accept the annual actuarial report for fiscal year end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Mayor and council, we have used select actuarial services for the last nineteen years now. They've always done an excellent job for us. This evening, we have Laura S. Brousse. She is here to give us a summary of the results. And we have provided to all of you hard copies of the presentation in front of you. I came by earlier today, it's on, right there in front of you. This is Laura S. Brousse.
So we've prepared a report for the city, which we do every year. The city, the report is required to meet the governmental accounting standards board, number forty-five, that requires you to carry liability for all your future unpaid claims, whether you know about them or not. So that's what our, the main objective of our study is. I'll be going through this brief presentation that you have a copy of. The full report has been provided to you, and also Brian has copies of that as well. So the main objective of our study is to provide an analysis of the required reserves as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. That's for all of your self-insured workers' compensation, liability, and healthcare claims within your self-insured retention. And then the second objective is to forecast the losses for the upcoming fiscal year. So we'll start with the reserves as that's looking back to the past. These are claims that, liabilities for claims that have occurred in the past, but they will continue to be paid in the future. And so the amount of reserves required to pay for those claims is in total two million four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And you can see the breakdown in the pie chart, that most of this is for workers' compensation claims. They tend to stay open longer as you pay medical bills on injured workers. So the total for workers' compensation is one million four hundred and seventy-six thousand. The next largest category is healthcare, that's for your employee health benefits. The unpaid claims, those tend to pay out quickly, but you do have outstanding claims at the end of the fiscal year of six hundred and forty-four thousand. Liability claims, those are third-party claims against the city, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And then up, there's another tort claim, a structured settlement of thirty thousand that we include in our total. As compared to last year, this is just the bottom-line comparison. You'll see the total is up about just over a hundred thousand, mostly on workers' comp. Health is up just a little, liability is down. The, this represents the unpaid portion, and we will see that the total costs have actually, for a lot of the lines, have improved. And we'll look at the, we'll start with health benefits first. There was an increase, we look on a fiscal year basis, seven-one-seventeen to seven-one-eighteen. That year, your total health benefits, which at this point are all now paid and closed, were just over five million dollars, which was about two hundred thousand more than expected. And as we looked at that, there were five stop-loss claims. That means that they paid the full limit of what, of your responsibility, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand per claim. And you had five of those in the two thousand eighteen calendar year, so that sort of straddles these two fiscal years. So far in two thousand nineteen, there have been none to reach that point yet, so we're hopeful that two thousand nineteen, on your plan, will be a good year. And so far for the eighteen-nineteen year, those costs are coming in less than expected. So we have reduced that estimate quite a bit to just under five million dollars for the eighteen-nineteen year. So eighteen closed out higher than we expected, but nineteen is looking like a better year for workers' compensation. The two thousand eighteen, the, the claims in two thousand eighteen, that's how we look at the data, is the year that the claims occur. Two thousand eighteen's a little higher than expected, but all the other years that claims occurred, that we still have open claims, they're coming in less than expected and kind of offset the two thousand eighteen experience. And so in total, ultimate losses are down, so. And then for liability, again, those losses are below expected, and we've increased, the ultimate losses by a hundred and twelve thousand. And again, ultimate losses is just the total cost of all the claims that, that you've incurred to this point. For the forecast, this is more of a budget number for the nineteen-twenty year. That total budget for healthcare, workers' compensation, and third-party liability is six million seventy-nine thousand. And you can see that most of that is healthcare, at five million four hundred and ninety-five thousand. I believe that the, the parameters of the plan have not changed as far as the stop-loss limits and that sort of thing. Workers' compensation, the cost of claims in this coming fiscal year are four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And liability, about a hundred and nine thousand dollars. There's a little breakdown over the next few pages of how those numbers have changed since last year. We won't go through all the detail. I'm sure you've looked at these or can look at them more at your leisure, but health, we've already mentioned that our forecast for nineteen-twenty is down a little bit compared to last year, even though we have a few more employees on that top row, we have a few more employees that we're estimating participating. The monthly cost per employee is down, so that the total cost is about the same. And of course, inflation is a consideration as we, as we move forward. We've presented two years of costs here. So the nineteen-twenty year, five million four ninety-five, and then an increase in the following year for a few additional employees and inflation on the monthly cost. For workers' compensation, those, the total forecast is down compared to last year. The payroll estimate that we have is for, for nineteen-twenty is lower than the estimate that we had last year for the same, same period. One thing that we have noticed with all of our Oklahoma clients is that the effects of the law change in two thousand fourteen that affected workers' comp and reforms in the state have, seem to have a lasting impact, and a lot of our cities that retain risk are benefiting from that, and costs are coming down. So I think that's a good trend. In fact, we, we kind of have a negative loss trend because of declines in claim frequency, the number of claims. So our forecast for nineteen-twenty is four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and for the following year, assuming the same trends, is four hundred and seventy-six thousand. Of course, your cost per claim, your, your maximum cost per claim, your self-insured retention is about six hundred thousand at this point. So you do bear a lot of risk in that, you know, you have the potential for, for large claims, although the occurrence of those in your experience has been very few. For automobile and general liability, that's kind of all the third-party liability claims. We estimate a hundred and nine thousand. That number's down from our prior forecast. Even the, the payroll's down a little bit, but the cost per payroll, the rate that we've estimated is also down. So good news all around, as, as your historical years have improved, then that just, we, we use your historical experience to project the future, so those numbers are down as well. And again, the, the last page is just a summary of all the results that we've presented. The first column is the, the total reserve balance by line, two million four ninety-five, and then the forecast estimates for the next two fiscal years. And the final page is just some terms defined, as you might want to refer to that as you continue to look at this. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reddy, do we need to vote on this, or just to receive the report?
You should probably have a motion to accept the report or a motion to reject it, whatever the board wants to do.
Okay, thanks. Anybody want to make a?
I'll make a motion, we accept the report as presented.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of a lot split located in the northwest quarter of section eleven, township ten north, range three west, being east of Julie Drive and south of northeast Twenty-first Street, application by Paul Methan. Continue to debate.
Mayor and council, this is a vacant piece of property. It's located east of Julie Drive and south of northeast Twenty-first Street. It is currently zoned R-one and is just over one acre in size. The applicant is requesting to split the property into two lots to be used for residential homes. Each lot would be approximately one, one-half acre in size. City water and sewer are available to the site. Because of the narrow configuration at the street, there will only be one curb cut granted. Two Julie Drive and a shared driveway will be required. Staff recommends approval of this lot split application contingent upon a shared access easement being filed at county for the common driveway. And the second contingency is that the common driveway must be constructed to standards and specifications set forth by the city engineer that would accommodate an emergency vehicle. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any flooding issues with this?
I'm sorry?
Any flooding issues?
No, this is out of the flood plain.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Most are approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of a revocable permit to erect a sign in the public right-of-way at twenty-nine-hundred South Telephone Road, application by Vanguard Development.
Mayor and council, this is for an existing office building on South Telephone Road. The applicant is requesting an approximately two-foot-by-eleven-foot encroachment into Telephone Road right-of-way to be used for a sign. There is no water or sewer at this location within the right-of-way, and the revocable permit that is included in your packet that has already been executed by the applicant does state that with notice from the city, this, the city may require them to remove the encroachment anytime, so it is a revocable permit. There is a layout on page ninety-nine of where they would like to put the sign, and then on page one hundred is what the sign would look like. If you have any questions, the applicant is here.
Most are approved, second.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is considers a preliminary plat for Broad, excuse me, Broadmore Heights, located in the south half of section twenty-five, township ten north, range three west, being north of southeast Thirty-fourth and west of Bryant Avenue, application by Scissor Tail Development Group, LLC. Planning Commission recommended approval of this five-to-two. This is item one.
Mayor and council, this site is located north of southeast Thirty-fourth Street on the west side of Bryant Avenue. The preliminary plat consists of attractive land, being the existing Broadmore Golf Course property. It is approximately one hundred and thirty-four acres in size. The property was rezoned in two thousand eighteen pursuant to a district court order. The intention of the, of the court action was to allow for the property to redevelop as a single-family subdivision. The preliminary plat proposes four hundred thirty-nine residential lots and ten common areas. It results in a density of approximately three lots per acre. Stormwater detention will be required, and there is no FEMA flood plain located on the property. However, there is a history of flooding to this area that relates to the flat terrain. Some of the abutting homes, especially to the south and east, have experienced flooding and standing water after significant rain events. The applicant has submitted a preliminary drainage report. Our engineer has reviewed the report and has agreed with their premise of their calculations and methods. He does believe that the drainage report shows something that is a workable solution for the property. There are several items that need to be adjusted moving forward with the final plating, but overall, it is a good drainage report. Access is proposed by a divided median entryway from South Bryant Avenue and through the existing Willow Pine Drive, that deadens into the site. These two access points does meet our access standards set out in the subdivision regulations. Additionally, to increase the future connectivity between neighborhoods, two street stubs have been provided abutting the undeveloped properties to the north. The, the property does have access to Willow Pine Drive. It is anticipated to increase the traffic flow on that street. However, it should be noted that the existing Willow Pine Drive was built as a collector street when it was developed, and that it does include additional width that is intended to accommodate heavier traffic flow than a traditional local residential street. There are ten common areas identified on the plat. Many are intended for drainage infrastructure. Common Area D on the plat is reserved for existing cell towers and a future clubhouse. There are several that are also reserved for an existing pipeline to accommodate a pipeline easement. A portion of the common Area H that abuts the south property line will act as a buffer to existing homes to the south, and it will also allow for historic encroachments on, to the subject site. Consideration, when looking at these common areas, consideration should be given to the safety concerns of open space being largely hidden from street view. These, this applies to common areas B, G, and the southern boundary buffer in common Area H. The lots configuration abutting those common areas will need to be adjusted at the final plat stage to focus on larger open space access and views from higher visibility streets. There is water and sewer available to serve the site. Extensions will be required throughout the site to serve each lot. The Envision More two thousand forty plan calls for this location to be urban residential. Land uses allowed in urban residential land use designation include a mix of single-family detached units, up to seven dwelling units per acre. This application was reviewed as to conformance with the intent of the plan, and based on the proposed densities at three units per acre, the stormwater amenities and open spaces that are provided with the development, staff believes that this application does meet the intent of the urban residential land use district and the overall plan, goals of the plan. Therefore, amendment to the plan is not required. With the zoning of this property being determined through Cleveland County District Court, the matter currently under consideration is not whether the site is appropriate for urban density, single-family zoning, but rather if the preliminary plat, under consideration tonight, meets the requirements set forth in the Moore subdivision regulations. Knowing that, staff does recommend approval of this preliminary plat. I should note that there is a letter of protest that is included in the packet on page one oh seven. Also, there are several topics that were discussed at a neighborhood meeting held in July that were not touched on in the staff report. Primarily, the topic of encroachments has been one that has drawn a lot of the citizens' interest, and there are many encroachments on the site as a golf course, and the develop, the developer's engineer has met with many, many residents and talked with them, and met them on-site, to try to resolve these encroachment issues, and I believe that, that many of these residents who are concerned have been satisfied through, through that avenue, and the applicant is here, and he can speak more to that. Another topic that was not touched on in the staff report was about school overcrowding. I did have a conversation with Superintendent Rollines about this issue, and he assured me that as development continues, especially in the southeast quadrant of the city, that the school will be making the adjustments necessary to accommodate that growth. He was very confident that he could make sure that all students get a quality education and not sacrifice that in regards to additional growth. Also, I believe that a draft copy of the minutes have been made available to you prior to this meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, I do have copies of the full-size plat, if that would help you in your consideration tonight.
Thank you. We have a couple people signed up to speak. Keith Grady? Would you like to speak?
I'm here for the city council. I've been a resident of the clubs for twenty-five years, and many times I've taken my dogs on walks on the golf course, and many times I've played at the golf course. There's many concerns, I think, a lot of the people that are here, here tonight want to address. There are concerns about the roads, concerns about the Willow Pine entrance, concerns about another school needing to be built, concerns about roads needing to be widened on Bryant and Thirty-fourth, and possibly eastern, the traffic light situation over there. Also, one of the things, my concern is about the wildlife. A lot of times, the wildlife, like shoved aside, there's all kinds of wildlife on the golf course, and what's going to happen to them? I mean, are they just going to be shoved off somewhere to and to find another place? But, you know, like I said, my, my concerns are that this is going to be just a huge, a huge mistake for the City of Moore, building all these houses, aggravating the traffic situation and the school situation, and I just think it's a really bad idea.
Okay, thank you. Greg Rogers?
Yes. My name's Greg Rogers, I live in four oh nine, southeast Thirty-fourth Street.
I live in four oh nine Southeast Thirty-fourth Street in Moore. First thing I need to do is like your highlight portion in there. Just wait.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you.
Before we even go on there, first thing is this three houses per acre they just mentioned? I don't understand how that's possible when you have one hundred and thirty-four point zero five acres. You have twenty-two acres point oh three in common areas. That leaves you one twelve point oh two. That comes out to four houses per lot. So in their preliminary plat, they're proposing three houses per lot and they say they have lots that are even bigger than three. So if they've got a half acre lot or, then you know what, that reduces that, increases that amount to four or five homes per lot or per acre. Now, on page three, Mr. McKenzie, you had a question about your text with me. Where did you get the information that they were not quite claiming deeds to this property over to us?
I don't have that information, that it was ever official.
Okay, well, if you were at the meetings, then that's not what's happened.
Last month I was surveying TDY for the Air Force, so I actually wasn't at the planning commission meeting, but I did read the minutes.
Well, they said you were at the neighborhood meeting.
I was at the neighborhood meeting.
And that was not what was said by the developers then?
That's what I said, that it wasn't.
No, developers said they would quite claim deeds over. And again, on the planning commission, it was stated they would quite claim deed these properties over. Now, understand, I've been there forty years. The gentleman just stood here for twenty, he said he'd been there twenty-five. I've talked to people on Fairway Drive. No one has been satisfied. That's a misrepresentation that anybody has agreed to these green zones. There, nobody agreed to any encroachment. I talked to the neighbor on Fairway Drive on the Friday afternoon after speaking to Mr. Brooks and when he came home, his boundary stake was moved in ten foot. So how can these people be telling you, and you expect that to deal with a third party ten years from now? Now, that's not the way the city should prove anything. They should be dealing with taking care of alleviating this problem now, upfront, done. They can do it when they close on the property because they don't even own the property right now. It's still in Bob Greenberg's name. Now, as you can see, the common areas here, historical encroachments are all highlighted and the preliminary plat to redevelop into a subdivision, there's no one, the court order, if you go back and look at the general entry, we've already satisfied that court order. They don't dictate to us how they're going to build this. Needless to say, we don't have an engineering report. And Mr. Box clearly stated, sorry to skip on you, that on page five, the bottom part that was highlighted, it says, "Drady decided the development must comply with all drainage requirements and plans must be reviewed and approved by the city's engineering compliance."
Mr. Rogers, I know that we've all spoken to you and you've spoken to city staff. We don't require an engineering report at this stage.
Well, that's not what's being said. You don't have, we don't have a city report, we don't have our engineering drainage report.
We only require a preliminary plat at this point and I think that...
Okay, well, I understand that, but I also understand that's not what Mr. Box said.
Mr. Box doesn't work for us.
I understand that and that's why I'm saying, he said that, that's, he represents the developer, not me.
Well, before we go any further, let me explain something. There are seven duly elected people sitting on this right here and we all voted against this thing. Then we had this judge in Cleveland County who said we have to do it. So that's why we're here.
We're done. All you had to do was rezone it. Doesn't say that we have to agree to any way they suggest or telling us they're going to do it. Because they stood in my backyard and told me that they do not plan on improving the drainage, but don't even plan on making it better.
That's the law, though.
I'm telling you what they told me in my backyard, that they said they were not going to improve the drainage.
That's the law. They don't have...
I understand what the law is, ma'am. I'm just saying, they said they were not going to improve it, but it would not make it any worse. So that sounds to me, they're not even, the drainage plan, they've got, they intend to fix the problem. And it's not just my problem, it's everybody on Thirty-fourth Street, everybody on Fairway Drive, everywhere over in the stels and in the clubs. And all we've asked for is, look, get this done. It says portions of the top of page six says the portions of the individual will be deeded to the owners and that the homeowners will maintain by, the property will be, all common areas will be maintained by the homeowners association. So I need to, one question on that process because if you're starting in the northeast corner, it's going to take ten or twelve years to get to mine. Is all of the other one hundred and sixteen acres or one hundred and seven acres, is that all considered common area? And what is there, if that's a homeowner's association, what is the homeowner's requirement to move? Because right now, they said they're going to let it grow twelve inches high on one hundred and sixteen acres. They have no intention to let the golf course close in phases. They want to build in phases, but they don't plan on phasing it out. They plan on closing it at one time, getting rid of all employees and all the security to keep kids out of the ponds, the creeks, the wildlife. I mean, my neighbor got four moccasins, or water moccasins in the backyard after last rain. So this is not, if you go on to page eight or six, you'll also see that there's eight citizens there that have all registered their problems with complaints. And there are subjects there going there that were all brought up. None of these are the minutes. I have the minutes, I have provided you the minutes. I would ask the council that that information needs to be provided. You can't vote on something when you don't know what it is. And that's what it's coming down to, is you guys don't know what it is. If it was your neighborhood or your house, I've got five thousand dollars worth of dirt. I've been mowing and maintaining that property. The lady on Fairway Drive has a sprinkler system in hers all the way to the driving range net. They're going to propose to cut her sprinkling system off by about thirty feet. Their idea of satisfying the people, nobody's been satisfied, period. There's not one resident that has a letter of intent or a quitclaim deed. Quitclaim deeds should be done before they purchase the property.
In reality, the quitclaim deed should have been done when the original...
With Bob Greenberg and then Frankie and the Pizza Hut guy, because I've been there through all of them.
Correct.
And Mr. Greenberg has been in my backyard, spoken to me, and said they rescinded all claims from the outbound stake going south to Thirty-fourth Street. Well, they're proposing a ten foot. So you want me to give up forty-five to fifty foot for ten and not be compensated for the five thousand dollars worth of dirt and development that Greenberg told us we had to do ourselves? And they mow up to the white stakes as of Friday. So they're still honoring their agreement and their contract, a verbal contract that's three years of the state of Oklahoma. Now, whether I go in, file suit, or file my legal courts, or somebody wants to agree with a letter of intent, that's up to then. But this issue's not going to be decided by y'all, it wasn't decided by you in the first place. But you can't approve something you don't know. I mean, I don't, I mean, I pointed out just a few things that we don't know. They don't care for the safety of the kids in the neighborhood. They're going to leave this one hundred and twelve acres just unattended with all these ponds and waterways and everything around this place. There's no security provided, no generalized mowing. It's simple, the idea is if you're going to phase it in building, we close two or three holes and phase it in that way so that you can, can't see any of that property from the street. There is no visibility for the police or the emergency vehicles that need to get there if something happens.
You understand, even if we, even if we were to deny this plat, they could co-close the golf course tomorrow.
They don't own it.
There's nothing that says that we...
Then Bob Greenberg can close it and we can go after Bob Greenberg.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what we're standing right now, yeah.
The city of Moore cannot force a business to happen.
They can't, you can't approve this plan.
Mr. Rogers, I would say this to everyone. Tonight, unfortunately, I'm the only board one city council person and I've talked to several of you. I care a lot about this. I sat on planning commission when this came through, then I was lucky enough to come on city council to deny it and I've listened to you, everyone. I understand, the only time you want us to tell you what a private citizen has to do with their own property is tonight on this golf course.
No, nobody's told Bob Greenberg he couldn't build a half million dollar mansion or a million dollar mansion on there. Nobody's told him that.
He wants to sell it, though.
He's a neighbor.
He wants to sell it, sir.
Okay, but under, at first possession laws in the state of Oklahoma, I have a claim to that property. So does the other eighty-three residents that live there that back up to this property. Now, you are here to represent the city of Moore people.
Absolutely, and I feel like I've done a fantastic job of that.
Then you can't approve something, tell them it's okay that we have, because what's going to happen is you're going to approve this, they're going to buy the property and then they're going to do it, they're going to say they're going to deal with the problems as they go. They're going to take that property and then they're going to sell it to a builder. A builder's going to put a stake in my backyard twenty feet from my porch and tell me, take my fence down, move my flower beds, move my rock gardens, and then my neighbors are going to be saying that their property's going to be encroached over that ten foot. So until they supply, I don't think it's wrong to ask people to fix the problem now.
I think whatever we say tonight, you're not going to be happy tonight. You're not going to leave here happy.
Well, I didn't ask to leave here happy, did I?
You don't have a deed to the property that you're occupying, it belongs to someone else. And the idea, what I heard last time at the meeting was that the developer was suggesting a green belt which covered the encroachments. When I read these meeting minutes and Mr. Dillon answers, all common areas will be maintained by the HOA, to me that says that it's going to be HOA land. And all of those things like HOA covenant and the final plat, those come at a later time. I'm as sad as everybody else about this golf course. I can assure you that I've heard about it as much as anybody else as well, but tonight we're only approving the preliminary plat.
Man, what you just said is not, is again, is to the fact that we don't know, you don't know, none of you know. If they're going to quitclaim deed these properties, how they're going to sell this boundary dispute with all of us?
Well, let's ask the guy that's putting it in.
Because I, you know, nobody has been satisfied, nobody's agreed to anything. There is no paper written down on it, there's no sit come out there and said, this is what we'll do, do you agree to it? There's nothing done. You can't let them progress and not resolve the issues before us.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to take?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, David Box, five twenty-two, Colored Fork Drive. On behalf of the applicant, who is Mark Grubbs, who is also here, and Kendall Dillon, who's a civil engineer. As it relates to the encroachments, one of the plans from the start was, the way to deal with it was to be able to quitclaim deed some of the encroachments, if not all of the encroachments, to the people that have encroached and then, so that you don't have a development that has a zigzag group of fences, what the balance would be common area that would be owned and maintained by the HOA of this new neighborhood. Mr. Dillon, after the first neighborhood meeting, which I think there was probably, this room was full and there were people standing, the lion's share of the people, I think, had questions, concerns about the encroachments. I made generous suggestion that Mr. Dillon will give anyone his cellphone that wanted it and he was the most popular guy in the room. The next morning, he got a call from someone at eight AM, he got his truck in his office in Yukon, drove out there and he has met with, I think, every single person that has wanted to meet onsite. Nothing about that plan has changed. I am representing Mr. Grubbs. Mr. Grubbs has a contract to purchase the property. He doesn't have the legal authority to grant any quitclaim deed, any encroachment issue until such time as that he closes. He can't close on the property until we are done with this process. But nothing about our desire to quitclaim those encroachments to these people has changed. That is still the plan, there's just no vehicle to get us there until this process is done. And so we're trying to work through that. One of the problems is some people's encroachments are larger than others, so it's taking some engineering work to figure out how it's all going to work. There's just going to be a lot of work, lack work, that's going to have to be done because you have all these individualized encroachments. It's not like it's an entity that has an encroachment, it's individuals and so we're going to have to work through it. But it was designed, this plat was designed in such a manner to take into account all of those encroachments were possible.
So let me ask you a direct question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if your client buys his property and closes on it, are you going to take care of these guys as far as a quitclaim deed?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we need.
Absolutely.
And I have a, I have a question, this might be for Elizabeth, and the drainage question that was brought up. Elizabeth, you did state that the city engineer has looked at it and is, at this point, happy with how that drainage will, and that it will help alleviate some of the problems on that, that one side beside. Is that correct?
I, I can't say it will help alleviate the problems, it will not cause any new problems. There are some areas where they are going to be directing stormwater to different existing infrastructure, which will help some people, but I can't give a blanket statement saying that everyone's situation will improve.
But it will, right, it'll remain as is at a minimum.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Box, I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I just, I would like for you to explain to people that we as a city did try to buy that golf course numerous times, we just couldn't come up with the money that they wanted.
That's right.
But there's a lot of people out there that say you guys didn't even try to buy the golf course, but we did.
No, you did. We were, I mean, there were countless meetings in which me and Mr. Greenberg and you and the city manager and other parties tried to find a way to do it and it simply...
Couldn't work.
It couldn't work.
We needed the school to come in because the school was wanting to use the golf course more than we did.
Right.
And we just, we couldn't get them to come in.
It wasn't for lack of effort, certainly.
That's right.
To your drainage question, so we will, we will certainly meet all state law requirements in addition to all ordinance requirements of the city of Moore. And so on the encroachments, one of the troubles we had is with everybody, so the, my engineer wanted me to clarify, it's all visible encroachments, what we, fences, structures, things like that. So, yes, that was and remains the plan.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, does that satisfy your...
No. 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 No, sir, that does not satisfy me because the simple fact is, we have forty years of history that shows us that from Frankie to the Pizza Hut guy to Bob Greenberg, I was there when Duffy Martin was there. The way the property's been maintained at Eighty-Ninth and Shields at Brookside, the grass is, it's out of control and that's what they proposed to do to us in our backyards. And they think they have no responsibility to that, to be a good neighbor. At least Bob Greenberg, we know where we stand. I mean, that's the point. And if we need to deal with Bob Greenberg, then the city council should allow us till the next meeting to deal with Bob Greenberg and everybody had, will have notice of that. I mean, that, I think, I think everybody should have a chance to take care of, give them thirty days, then they all have time to make up their decision and whether they want to agree to something that Mr. Box or Kendall's proposing, I don't have a problem. My problem is, one, they also missed the fact they didn't try for a new entrance, which was brought by the planning commissioner, a new entrance on Thirty-fourth Street. They said they had not acquired to talk to anybody. They've talked to me nine times about my property and after the meeting, they asked me to give it to them for free, three times, not once, three times. The engineer said, if you'll give it to us for free, we'll be glad to accommodate the city in you. I wasn't trying to drill nobody on that deal. I was going to trade square footage for square footage with Mr. Grubbs. I spoke to him myself, not Bob, I spoke to Mr. Box about it, I spoke to Kendall about it, they all know about it. So them to stand there and say that, that's not true. And every time you seen in there where they said stuff that wasn't true, I mean, the minutes need to be provided to the public. You guys need to see the minutes of what was said in that meeting.
We saw the minutes, the ones that you just provided.
Right, those, yeah, but those don't include any statements made by me or anybody, eight other neighbors. Just two neighbors, one, no complaint, other than he didn't like the fact of why we had the court, do what the court said. And the other one said he was fine, which I don't, he lives in one house, he's one person on Fairway Drive that maybe is accommodated, I don't know. All I know is other neighbors I spoke to on Fairway have not been accommodated, neighbors up and down Thirty-fourth, I know the neighbor, I know the two people to the, well, four people to the east of me and all the way down to Thirty-fourth Street, none of them have been accommodated. None of them has said, yes, that's, that's workable with me and did not quitclaim deed to property? I'm confused because I've been told by the city, hold on, let me finish. I've been told by a city employee at the engineer's office that they weren't quitclaim deed, that it's going to be a green boundary. I've been told by Ms. McKenzie the same thing.
I just say that was my understanding.
Let me finish, please.
I think you just heard that wasn't...
Let me finish, please. I've been told by her, I've got a text from you that says that. Mr. Webb said the same thing in a text from him. Well, I'm disappointed in Mr. Webb for not being here and I've talked to every one of you guys on the phone. Mr. Webb's the only person I've never heard from until all I got was a text, three, four line sentence that he agreed with Ms. McKenzie and she's surprised me about the total situation. I asked him about the quitclaim deed and they said, he said the same thing. No. I don't know where they're getting their information, but that's the city, the city council, and then we've been told by the owner. I mean, that's ridiculous.
I guess my question is, if it's been forty years or however long, why haven't you gone after a quitclaim deed before now?
Because Mr. Greenberg's never said he would, he had told the residents and the employees did not know until the last meeting they were losing their job. Okay? They, I'm just telling you what's been said and done. To this point, we have, I've approached Mr. Greenberg and he says he will not claim anything south of the outbound stakes to Thirty-fourth Street. That's why we had thirteen loads of dirt delivered on that property.
In two thousand and sixteen, he came before planning commission to have this rezoned. Is it two thousand and sixteen or seventeen? Elizabeth, do you know?
I think it was sixteen.
I think it's sixteen.
When he was sitting in my backyard, he already knew what he was doing.
In two thousand and sixteen, it was a public meeting, he came to have it rezoned, we voted no, it came as a planning commission.
I understand what's happened.
So I'm saying that this isn't a surprise, so I understand how this is frustrating.
It's a surprise that Mr. Greenberg's not honoring his work and his contract.
I understand this is frustrating in that...
No, man, it's a simple fact of contract law.
I understand this is frustrating.
He has a verbal contract with us to maintain that property and to take care of it.
Sir, I understand this is frustrating.
No.
The idea of waiting one more city council meeting for this, I don't agree with, because since 2016, we've been talking about this for three years.
And it's never been sold, until anybody. It's still not sold.
For three years, this has been coming out.
So, three, no, three years it hasn't been sold. It's not sold now. Bob Greenberg still owns it.
Well, what do you want us to do?
Stop this until next, the next meeting.
And we all go to jail.
And then Mr. Webb, no, it's not gonna violate the court order.
No.
The court order says to rezone the property, you rezone the property. All we're saying is the engineering report, the encroachments, all need to be dealt with upfront. You don't have a written report from the engineering firm that the city hired.
Legally, they can't do that, and we never require anyone else to do that. So, why...
To resolve the issue?
Legally, we can't do that.
Where else has this been a problem?
If that's our law, we can't legally do that.
Where has it been a problem?
I don't understand what you think is a problem. I know people get into that.
That they're gonna encroach in my backyard, and that you want me to deal with the, not the developer.
That you're encroaching their property, it actually goes the other way.
No, I'm not encroaching on their property, they don't own it. You're taking, let's sell it.
You don't either.
Well, I promise you this, the courts will, this will be, there's no...
I mean, that's the other avenue to take.
Right, so that's why I say, you need to give us thirty days to either try to let them resolve the issues, that gives them a chance to do their thing, and it gives us a chance to do that. That's fair. Both parties can, that's, just like if you go to court.
They can't do what you're asking until they own the property.
Well, they, yeah, they can't. It can be said, no, it can be done, sir. That's incorrect. They can do that at the closing.
They don't own the property.
But when they go to closing, they can do this.
They can't go to closing without the plat.
Ma'am, I understand. They cannot go, they're not gonna buy the property until this is approved by you tonight.
And keep in mind, this is a preliminary plat.
But that's how they're gonna buy the property.
Correct. And that's how they're gonna fix the encroachments.
No, they're not. Preliminary, they're telling us they're gonna do something, their builders have been telling us for years.
Okay, that's enough. We've heard enough. Thank you very much.
One more.
No, that's it.
Is there anybody else who didn't sign up?
Anybody else that didn't sign up wanna speak? Yes, sir. We're just going around in circles. Like I said, seven people on the planning commission, seven people on this council duly elected, turned us down, and it got approved by a judge. We had nothing to do with that.
I understand that. My name is Paul Grubbs. I live at 329 Pauline Renee. My wife and I moved here April a year ago, and we like it. We're from Texas, don't hate us. We love more. I grew up in Dallas, and I saw, you know, what happened to my town. There's neighborhoods like this one that's being planned where the men and women have to pack a lunch to get out of their own neighborhood. It's that bad. And I don't wanna see that happen. But I do have some concerns. I just wanna briefly tell you where I'm coming from. I don't know what's going on. I've done, I've tried to find out, and there's a lot of rumors this and rumors that. And it concerns me, because right out of my back door is the Seventeenth, and it's not too far from my picture window to my property line. And if they put up a two-story house right there, it's gonna change everything for me. So, I would, I would like to know a little bit more about what's going on. I do know this. My friends that live down on the 4100 block of Eastern, when the apples went in, the, it got flooded in their, their house. Not in their house, but right up to their step. And the developer did everything he was supposed to do by law. But the city engineer fessed up that apparently the plans weren't good enough to handle that much water coming off of that much concrete. So, the city came in there and they dug a culvert between his house and his neighbors down to the creek. But what is going on? I know, I'm old enough to know that what I don't know can hurt me, and it can cost me. And I've heard rumors that when there was a fire, that guy dumped a bunch of electrical cart batteries in the swimming pool, and there's chemicals down there. There's some potential hazards in there that I don't know. It may just be a rumor. And I contacted the EPA, and I got an email back saying, don't call us, we'll call you. And that was it. So, I don't know if it's out there or not. I do know that the water runoff and the traffic and the schools and all that is gonna be a problem. So, first of all, I wanted to come, and these three guys, they were gracious enough to set up the meeting. And then it was changed, because their plans were incomplete, and the meeting was postponed indefinitely. Then we got a letter from y'all, ten days notice, and we met. And most of the questions that were directed to Mr. Dillon and Mr. Box really was what the city council had to address. They were gonna do everything they were legally required to do. They're gonna be good neighbors. I take Mr. Grubbs, he got a nice name, for his word, that he's gonna be a good neighbor, and good neighbors, and good fences make good neighbors. But at that meeting, there was nobody there to answer the questions about flooding and traffic and schools. And so, when we came to the planning commission meeting, the city engineer wasn't here to address some of those issues. So, this is really just my third time at bat, and I still don't know what's going on. So, I'm worried. I would like to know what's going on. And this thing is like a baby elephant. It's been going on for over two years. I know y'all wanna get this down the road. But there are some unresolved issues that I feel like the general public needs to know a little more information, so that we don't have a city engineer, okay, the plans, I see no problem with it, he's not even here, the secretary says, he's looked at them, he doesn't see any problems. We don't even get to ask any questions. So, I am asking only that you guys table this and let us have the city engineer specifically meet with us. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Mr. Grubbs, could I, can I address some of those concerns? On the school issue, as we build homes, and I'm sure that everybody's similarly familiar with this, that property taxes go into the pool, and that's how the city, that's how more schools fund. More schools and the city are completely separate. So, Dr. Rowminds was nice enough to share that information with Elizabeth, that yes, they will build up and will be fine on the schools, but we do operate as completely separate entities. As far as the engineering plans, we never require a potential developer to submit those plans. Yes, they have provided a preliminary drainage plan, and Elizabeth, when I mess something up, because this isn't my full-time job. So, when I mess something up, please raise your hand, because Elizabeth is actually the director of community development. She is over the engineer, she's over the entire area, she is the expert in here. So, we don't need an engineer in here to give us the expertise. That's Elizabeth right now. But they were polite enough to provide a preliminary drainage plan because you guys are concerned. So, that was something they did above and beyond. And as Elizabeth addressed that a little bit, that yes, there were some areas that they need to touch up on, but overall, it looks like a good plan. The reason we don't make them give that is because, right now, he doesn't even own the property. So, this is money he's putting in preliminary, with the chance that he might develop this. As far as we go, there will be a final plat later, and in between here and the final plat, there will be steps that they have to take according to our city law and our government. So, just because you don't see it here, doesn't mean it won't get more in-depth and more detailed. Those will happen, and Elizabeth is fantastic with meeting with citizens. Most of the time when I call her about a specific issue, she's already talked to you. And so, as those come along, that is something that she, she could probably elaborate on a little bit more when we see that. But we never see that at the preliminary stage, because they don't own it, and we don't expect them to put that money in if they don't develop it. Does that help a little bit?
It would help a little bit more if I knew where we were with the EPA concern as far as the lead poisoning going into the land, because I've seen this happen with a big development. This one, Mr. Dillon said, is gonna take eight to twelve years to finish. So, I'm looking at bulldozers and concrete trucks and nail guns. I mean, I'm sixty-four, I hope I see it all finished. But I've seen these projects run into unknown consequences in the EPA, and it puts a big kibosh. And I don't want that all just dug up, and then the federal bureaucracy comes in and says, we got a problem, it's gonna cost a half a million or a million dollars to clean up this mess that somebody just indiscriminately disposed chemicals. I've seen that happen. I'm, it's not just a fear from nowhere. So, if she knows anything about it, I'd like to hear about that. And I'm gonna go sit down. I thank y'all for doing what y'all do. I know that this has been a long, very tedious process, and I'm new in town, but I'll be, y'all be seeing some more of me, I'm magic. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Elizabeth, I have a question about the drainage. When we did Lakeside, there was a lot of concern about the drainage, and we hired Miescheck and Associates as a third-party engineer to overlook everything. Would that be a possibility for this property as well?
That's who has been looking at some of your drainage.
Okay, then I try, I mean...
Yes, they're premier in Oklahoma, I guess.
Yes.
So, as far as the EPA concerns and the environmental concerns, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kendall or David, because they have done some additional legwork on this, because that was brought up in the first meeting that we had as a concern. And that concerns them, because that's an investment they're making. So, you wanna address that?
Good evening. Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll. In regards to the idea that there were batteries buried in a pool, there are three pools that we verified that have been filled in. We, we are doing our own due diligence in regards to Phase One environmentals and those sort of things. However, I will tell you, we have reached out to DEQ. There was a neighbor that filed a complaint with DEQ back in July, about the time we made our application. And the DEQ responded, they investigated the site. I have the report that basically says there was not sufficient enough evidence, and they suspended the claim. So, that's kinda where it sits. But again, on our side, obviously, we're purchasing the property. We try to cover as many of our bases as we can, so that we're involved in trying to make sure that there's not an issue there that we need to worry about before we close on the property. But again, that's, that's the facts of which I know, and that's about the extent of it. But we'll make certain, at least on our own basis, that we're in good shape before we purchase the property.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you.
Can I make one comment on the DEQ? I'm gonna file a complaint, that's never been given, okay? The DEQ, that's not exactly what they said, they exactly said was that this villain, Mr. Grubbs, assumes all liabilities and fines for that problem. There is no surface movement yet, there's meant surface movements out there, and this is not coming from me, this comes from the employees of the place. I don't know, Mr. Grubbs, I've never met a man in my life. I don't know how you know they've got a battery dump. Okay? So, all I'm saying is, the employee, the superintendent of the golf course said they can come out and take soil samples. That's what I was told. DEQ said if they buy the property, they assume all liabilities and fines. So, it wasn't that it's all just be suspended. The claim is suspended because if they're gonna reopen it, but maybe getting dirt removed in that property.
Okay. Can we require them to do an EPA study or environmental? They have to do that anyway for the loan, don't they?
Like I say, we're in the process. But again, in terms of things that are required for your consideration on preliminary plaits, I do not believe that to be one of them.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Just have a quick question for Elizabeth. And I was just looking through the minutes, and you addressed a little bit the congestion. And I know often we, sometimes we're reactive, it'd be good if there was already four lanes, but it isn't. And that stuff's expensive, and more than likely would require a bond issue to build four lanes along Broadway. And I think we're gonna be starting, or looking at some improvements on Third and Fourth, but that's still a little ways off. So, four hundred and thirty-nine lots, you know, I don't know, maybe you guys could better answer that. How quickly do you, obviously, you'd like to develop as quickly as possible to, to make your return on your investment, and I get that. But Elizabeth, we have to, as a city, just be very careful about building before we have the infrastructures to support all the homes and the new people that are coming to our town. I drive that way every work, every day we go to work and living. And especially there at Broadway and Eastern is a problem, even though we have a traffic light there. It's backed up, and you have to wait two or three lines for the intersection. So, just reading through this, you indicated in, I guess, the planning commissioner meeting, commission meeting, that we will address those issues as they become problems. But it's not something that we can fix in six months. I mean, it could take a couple of years to address those problems. So, you still feel okay moving forward at this point?
Yes. So, the way road construction works in Oklahoma is you never build a road unless you have verified traffic that's gonna drive on it. So, in order to get these roadways approved, you have to have a higher traffic count. Very few cities will ever proactively widen a road to anticipate development that's not occurring. It just doesn't make financial sense. One thing that we do make sure, and our city is a little bit unique on this, and we're actually a forerunner in the metro area, is we require transportation impact fees per lot, and that goes into a bucket of money that we then spend on capital improvements, not just maintenance, but capital improvements where it's needed. So, you know, we have constructed a lot of projects over the years using this bucket of money. So, they are paying their share, and I think that it is fair to say that we, it is on our radar. This has been the fastest-growing part of the community for a long time, and we are constantly evaluating the traffic. It doesn't probably flow quite as we would like. And I think that that is something that we always take into consideration anytime we look at new projects that are coming up board. So, I feel comfortable in saying that the city will address these traffic concerns in the future as, as the property builds out. I don't know if we would wanna do that tomorrow.
Right.
We couldn't do it tomorrow, it does take time. So, it's something that we need to start planning for. And, you know, in a fast-growing area like this, it's not just this development, it's all the other developments we've been dreamed of over the past, you know, ten to twenty years.
Okay, thank you.
What is the timeline? If everything was perfect, how long would it take you guys to develop this?
Under, like I said, it's completely contingent upon the absorption rate in the market, but just as it gets, probably ten years.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Anybody wanna make a motion, one way or the other? What, or, somebody raise their hand? Somebody else wants to make?
Thank you.
Sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm talking, Raymond Culler. We live on Fairway Drive. Assuming that the golf course is not going to stay a golf course at some point, and I think the mistake was made a long time ago without placing any blame, because I don't know. But there should have never been any encroachments on the golf course. I mean, it's either your property or it's not. When we bought our house, we believed that everything we were buying was ours. We had no idea that we were buying part of the golf course that we didn't, couldn't own. So, I think that the developers and would-be purchaser, from my perspective only, have been more than fair in saying that they will accommodate encroachments that have been there for so long. So, the idea that no one is satisfied, yes, I would like to see more, stay a small town of seventy-five people, but with lots of jobs and prosperity. But it's gonna grow, and people have to have a place to live, and that's not going to stay a golf course. And so, I think that the people from the would-be purchaser to the developers, everyone I've had dealings with have been as reasonable as they possibly could be. And what I fear is if this would-be purchaser and this developer is not approved, that someone may come in and say, get the building down, it's two feet on my land, and I want it down. And then, that's gonna be terrible for my wife to have to do all that work.
If this were put off for thirty days, would that create a lot of issues for you guys?
It would. It would create some contractual problems with the seller. And I just don't know that they're being anything accomplished. I mean, it frankly delays the finality of these people being able to get the encroachments taken care of, of getting it into Mr. Grubbs' hands. taken care of, of getting it into Mr. Grub's hands. We can make good on the promises, but otherwise, we can't.
Anybody want to make a motion at this point?
We've got one more.
Oh, one more? Okay, go ahead, last one.
I feel like it's the prices, right? We should be like, come on down.
Yeah, come on down. If you would, state your name for the record and your address.
I'm Jim Daye and my wife Lena and I have lived at Thirty-two Wade Fairway since nineteen ninety. One of the reasons we moved there was because of the golf course. It's something that we always appreciated, that street. We had friends that lived on it and had the opportunity to move there and we've really enjoyed it. And it's kind of like my neighbor Ray just said, we're not looking forward to losing their golf course, but if Mr. Greenwood has decided to sell, and it's inevitable, that's something we need to consider. The gentlemen behind us have been kind enough to come out and look at our situation. I live at the end of the cul-de-sac. I lost part of my backyard due to the twenty-five-foot additional step back on the extra-wide turnaround. It puts the boundary line about four feet off of my patio. My neighbors in that cul-de-sac are that way at the turnaround. They have came out, looked at it and are looking to come to a conclusion that we're both satisfied with. And like Ray said, if this does not go through, the next developer may not be of that mind to do that. It isn't my wish to lose the golf course. I prefer that it stay a golf course. I wish the city had been able to work out something with them so that they could purchase it. Obviously, if that's not going to happen, though, I think we need to look at making the best of a bad situation as far as the people who live on that golf course is concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Daye. Okay, one more. Anybody want to speak? One person want to speak?
Here in Thomas, my husband Bobby and I had lived on Southeast Thirty-third for the last three years. There again, we moved there because of the golf course. We're in a cul-de-sac and our lot with the amount of housing that he's planning with the preliminary plat, we're looking at the back and the side, ten houses on our backyard at least, I mean, at what he's got right now. There's supposedly a drainage ditch or ravine planned for behind that area. No one has answered my question, how large that will be. Are we talking a small ditch or are we talking a large deep ditch? You know, worrying about security to my backyard, kids playing back there graffiti, you know. Also, he says that the HOA will be responsible for the being mowed as they progress in each phase. An HOA, to my understanding, and maybe you can enlighten me on this, has to be seventy-five percent developed before there can be an HOA. So what about those?
The developer has to manage it up until that point. He will be responsible for the HOA responsibility until it's turned over.
Also, on Thirty-fourth, there is a sewer treatment or whatever that is that has a horrendous smell most of the summer and sometimes even in the winter. Are there any future plans? I understand you have to have future traffic studies and whatever, but are there plans to look at that? Does that need to be enlarged? What about the sewer, four hundred and fifty houses?
The project was approved earlier this spring, so we're in the process of buying the rightful way and that problem should go away here in the next eighteen months or so.
But is that planning for additional four hundred?
Yes, that was part of the project, so.
Planning for the whole southeast quadrant.
Okay. Is there any requirement as far as drainage ditches? I mean, ravines, does that have to be a certain size?
Well, that would depend on their final drainage plans. What they've given is a report that just calculates the volume of water, but it doesn't give any particulars on the type of infrastructure that will be there to take care of the water necessarily. That would have to just be, comply with city code and that depends on how much water's going through. So I don't think, I could tell you how big a flume or it could even be just a swell that drains four lots. I don't know that for sure. That's something that will be determined at the final plat stage.
But as far as HOA, you said they would be responsible for that until that is developed? I think that answers some of the questions, but, oh, the sidewalks at Broadmore, there are no sidewalks coming on the east, west side on south of Thirty-fourth. Are there any plans for that? You know, and more kids. And the parking on Willow Pine, she said that was a.
Collector's.
Yes, collector's. The parents park up and down those sites now. There is a lot of congestion there, mornings and afternoons. So that's some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sidewalks, we could certainly address that at some point.
Yes, we've done it on the other side of the Broadmore.
Yeah.
Tell me about how you're going to manage the undeveloped part of the property as you move from phase to phase. What's your plan on that?
Well, the HOA will have to maintain it in a manner that is consistent with your ordinances, so.
So that's the twelve inches it has to maintain?
That's right.
Is that right?
Yeah, so whatever your ordinances require, it'll be at least that and if not, better.
And prior to the HOA taking over, it'll be handled by Mr. Grubbs or someone that he's passing in.
Right. The HOA will exist. It'll just be owned and managed by the developer.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was very clear.
Correct, yep. Okay, thank you.
You guys want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll just not worry about it. There's times I love serving on our council and then there's times it's tough because I know whatever we decide, people are going to be unhappy.
I want to make it clear.
So I'm not making any motions, bro.
I want to make it clear this is the preliminary plat, so between now and the final plat, there will be several different studies going on, engineering studies and things that are completely outside my realm of knowledge because this isn't our full-time job. But with that being said, and I know it won't make anybody, it won't make everyone happy, that I do think that's important and imperative that we approve this tonight because of all the reasons. If it's not this developer, it'll be somebody else and I think that it may end up making neighbors less happy. I think there were some really valid points made on that, so I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council?
Just one quick comment for the developer. It's been my experience on the council that often we'll go through these processes like this that's pretty involved and then they'll sell. After all this has happened and done the hard work and then just turn around and sell to somebody else. And so all of those agreements and things that have been made with you and handshakes or things that are written, now all of a sudden they're done with somebody else and they didn't make that deal with them. So I really do hope that, you know, based, you know, on your word and reputation, that you'll be an honorable person and be diligent in doing the things that you say that you're going to do and serving the people in our community because we want the best for everybody in our city. And we're glad that you want to build here, but we want good builders. So please take that into consideration.
Okay, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
No. Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten is Consider Rezoning Application Number RZ nine eight four located in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, Section Two, being south of northeast Twelve Street and west of I-35 Service Road from C-three General Commercial District to C-three PU General Commercial District with a permissive use for participant recreation and entertainment, indoor alcohol beverages permitted and approved ordinance number nine two oh one nine, application by Twisted Axis Throw House. Okay, now, should you have throwing axes at a bar?
You need to hear the rest of the story.
I'll start from the top.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, this site is located at six oh nine Northwest Eighth Street. The property has an existing vacant building on the site and the applicant has leased the building and wishes to utilize the site for indoor recreational axe throwing with incidental onsite alcoholic beverage sales and consumption. The current zoning does allow for the axe throwing, recreational axe throwing by right. In other words, it doesn't have to come before the council for permission. However, the permissive use is required for the incidental onsite alcoholic beverage sales and consumption. This application does fall under the participant recreation use unit classification in our zoning ordinance. It has very similar characteristics to like a bowling alley or an escape room or an amusement center. As previously stated, these are uses allowed by right in C-three. However, the applicant does believe that providing the alcoholic beverage sales and consumption is important to his business plan. This business would have many similar characteristics to other businesses along the I-35 corridor that also allow the incidental alcohol sales and consumption. Businesses like Warren Theaters, although they're not located in Moore city limits, Hayday Entertainment and Andy Alligators also allow alcohol consumption and before it was destroyed by our tornado, so did the bowling alley. This will be on a smaller scale and the entertainment is a primary function of the business with the alcohol sales making up less than fifty percent. The Envision Moore Twenty Forty Plan calls for this location to be a regional center and this land use accommodates a mix of large-scale commercial uses that include retail shopping, entertainment and dining. This application was reviewed to the performance of the plan and the plan does recognize the I-35 corridor as an asset to create a vibrant destination for shopping, dining and entertainment. Bringing a unique entertainment venue such as the recreational axe throwing with the onsite alcoholic beverage would work to establish an alternative entertainment venue that would appeal to a variety of ages and customers. Amendment to the plan is not required for this application. The applicant is requesting a permissive use because by definition, permissive uses are, may not be appropriate in all areas within the underlying zoning due to potentially undesirable characteristics. And each permissive use should be viewed as unique and evaluated on their own merits. The subject site is located in a highly commercialized area. This application seeks to develop the unique entertainment venue, focuses on interactive socialization with the alcoholic sales as being highly desirable for a business model. With the modernization of the state's liquor laws, incidental onsite beverage, alcoholic beverage sales and consumption is becoming more prevalent in a variety of entertainment and service venues. Due to the limitation of alcoholic beverage sales and consumption to under fifty percent of the business, the location of the site along a commercialized area fronting I-35 and compliance with the Envision Moore Twenty Forty Plan, staff recommends approval of this application contingent upon the alcoholic beverage sales not constituting more than fifty percent of the business sales and that no outdoor storage or display is permitted. And as a side note, with the new laws that Oklahoma has passed, all, anything that is alcoholic beverage, including beer, is now considered a high-point alcoholic beverage. Our zoning ordinance does allow low-point beer to be served in situations such as this. However, there is no such thing as low-point beer anymore. So it may sound like that the applicant is opening up a mixed drink bar and that's not the case. He just plans to sell beer, which happens to be high-point now.
Elizabeth, a quick question. Assuming this passes and the business comes in and is really successful and maybe he needs to move on to a bigger place and now these changes have occurred, is it possible that a establishment that is geared more towards alcohol sales versus another kind of entertainment could come in there?
No, the permissive use does stay with the land, but the permissive use is only for the incidental alcoholic beverage sale. So it has to always be under fifty percent of the business that's there. So it would never be the primary business.
It does open a door, but it doesn't kick it wide open.
These are very prevalent in other states. I would compare it to something maybe more like a Topgolf where it's a good like adult date night and yes, you could fall off if you're at Topgolf, but people don't because they don't.
Because you're there to golf.
Right, because you're there to golf and maybe have a beer or something. So that's how I picture it, not just.
I believe there's one or two in Tulsa that also serve beer.
This will make people come from Oklahoma City and Edmond, in my opinion. I think this is a great idea. I'm really excited.
What, of the hours of operation?
I will defer to the applicant on that question. He is here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Benjamin Gaddy. I live at five sixteen Heather Lane here in Moore. For a couple more days, I work for the city because I'm moving on to start this business and I've lived here for about four years and I've enjoyed it. As far as hours for business, Monday through Friday, four to ten, Saturday, eleven AM to ten PM, and then Sunday, one PM to eight PM is the opening timeframe. And I know there is some concern Mayor Lewis brought up as far as it being a bar. I'm not interested in being a bar. I am interested in, as far as an axe-throwing space, there are two in the metro area, one of them being Andy Alligators, the other is Bad Axe at Western and Reno in Oklahoma City. They both serve alcohol with their space.
I just love that. It's funny, I've never heard of that concept. Seriously, what have the darts?
It's become a bigger dart. But I'm not, I'm not interested in intoxicated patrons, especially throwing an axe. So as far as training, I'm looking at TIPS training for all employees, which currently, including myself, which is ABLE-approved and approved in all fifty states and some other countries. So TIPS training, which is for sale and watching for intoxicated patrons and how to deal with that. And then also limiting during the portion of axe-throwing, limiting that alcoholic beverage option to two beers per hour, per person, just so that, keep away from that. Obviously, my liability skyrockets as well if I have those things going on and I'm not interested in that either. A normal axe-throwing session, one to two hours is pretty standard, so that's what you'd be looking at. I'm not interested in people just staying around drinking. I do have other options for if all of my lanes were full, I do have like cornhole, I do have darts and like giant Jenga, things like that for them to do while they're waiting. But I can answer any other questions.
Axe-throwing sounds like a great, uh, city council retreat.
After council meeting tonight, yeah, we should go there.
And I'll, this is my, will be my full-time job now, so if you need to do that before, I hope we can do a private party.
Thank you very much for bringing your business to Moore. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. We will probably be regular customers after council meetings. Okay. Number eleven is Consider Approval of Budget Supplements for FY nineteen dash twenty for prior year's purchase carryovers, excuse me, carryovers as follows. Risk management, sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, ninety cents. MTA, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, ninety-five cents. Street bond improvements, four million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, thirty-three cents. More public courts authority, six hundred and five thousand, sixty-seven dollars, five cents. General fund, one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. The cemetery, two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, sixty cents. Special revenue fund, ninety thousand, six sixty-eight, fifty-four, and fifty-four cents. Half-cent sales tax for tax, public safety tax equipment. Residential streets fund, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, fourteen cents. A quarter cent parks, fire station tax, hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, four cents. And a CDBGDR grant of one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, seventy-six cents.
Mayor and council, this is our request for your approval to roll per your open POs into the new fiscal year. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
So this gives you the opportunity to physically close out seventeen, eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. They didn't really need to do that, they just wanted me to read it off.
Yeah, most approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is Consider Approval of a New Job Description for the Position of Lead Construction Inspector in the Community Development Department, and Approved Placement in the Pay Grade of one oh eight of the city's salary table approved by City Council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Mayor and council, the Community Development Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for a new job description for a lead construction inspector. In April of this year, you did approve revisions to the Assistant Community Development Director position, and that gave the department more flexibility to use the specialized skill sets within their department and to accomplish some department tasks and goals. One of those is the addition of a lead or senior construction inspector. This position will allow for more project management and coordination of work instead of simply inspecting and reporting. Staff recommends approval and placement of this budgeted position in pay grade one oh eight of the city's salary table, which you approved in two thousand sixteen. I can answer any questions, as I'm sure you're aware Elizabeth is here as well tonight.
Thanks. This is a budget disposition?
Yes, sir.
Most approve.
Second. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I have one thing. Brooks, I'd like to say thank you for the job you do. You pick some really good people, and you've got a great staff, and you work well with them. And I appreciate that. So, and you sat there and took it off a while ago, and it was, it was great. So I don't know how you did it. Could you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is Consider Approval of Amendment Number One in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars to the Little River and Kelly Creek Channel Improvement Agreement for design plans for the addition of a parallel sanitary sewer line along the east side of Kelly Creek between Northwest Fifth Street and Northwest Twelve Street.
Mayor and council, back in April of this year, you approved a contract with Mecheck and Associates for design of a construction plans for the Little River and Kelly Creek Channel Improvement from northeast Twelve Street down to southwest Four Street. Parallel to this channel, there's an existing sewer line on the west side of that channel, and, which means the houses on the east side of the channel, their private sewer lines go underneath this drainage channel that we're doing. And as I said, there are about forty-five homes where their service line goes under this channel. So what we're, what we're going to do with your approval is to go ahead and construct a new sewer line on the east side of the channel from northwest Twelve Street down to northwest Fifth Street, so that we can remove those service lines under the, underneath the proposed new channel. Because the only thing that can occur when you're dealing with sewer lines underneath channels is, is, is nothing good can come from that. And so basically, because Mecheck had done the design and the surveying on the construction of the channel, it was more cost-effective to ask them to give us a cost estimate to go ahead and do the design for the service sewer line improvements. And so we would ask you to approve the amendment to their contract to allow them to do the design.
Make motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
What, how do we expect this, the overall impact on that project, cost-wise?
Well, you've already, we've applied for HUD money. This is in an area that can receive HUD money. We've already received, we anticipate the construction cost to be, for this new line on the east side of the channel, we're also going to improve the line on the west side of the channel so that all of the sewer is new when we put this new drainage channel in. But that cost is about anywhere from about four hundred and fifty thousand to maybe five hundred thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood. But we've received two hundred and twenty-seven thousand in this year's HUD money, and we anticipate that we'll get another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand next year, so very little as far as construction of the project.
Thanks. All right, we have a motion and a second. We, we, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is Consider Approval of an Agreement with Youth Scoreboards LLC to provide video scoreboards for the baseball and softball fields of Bucks Thomas Park.
Mayor and council, this is a proposal from Youth Scoreboards LLC. Barry Switcher is one of the partners, and what, what they have done is they've gone around to several cities within the state and put in these video scoreboards, and at their cost, and what they do is they sell advertising on the, on the scoreboards, and then once the advertising has paid for the scoreboard, then they split the proceeds of the advertising with the city on a fifty-fifty partnership. So they, they operate the backend of the scoreboards from Tulsa, so the, other than, from, other than running electricity to these scoreboards, which we already have, there's really no other additional cost to the city. We've looked at the agreement, and we don't see that there's any reason not to do this. Six other cities currently have them. The scoreboards are being installed in Mustang, so Mustang will, certainly will soon have them. Recommend approval.
So they're bearing the cost upfront?
Yes, yes.
What about maintenance of the scoreboards, like long-term maintenance? Wouldn't like bulbs go out, or?
The routine maintenance we would take care of.
Okay, just like we would normally on scoreboards currently?
These are, these are digital scoreboards. Assuming if they're showing video, they got to be digital.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Either, any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number fifteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B, ratify actions of the City Council on acceptance of the annual action report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Item C is ratify action of the City Council on approval of budget supplement for FY nineteen to twenty for prior years' purchase or order carryovers. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, seventy-three dollars, eighty-five cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty in the amount of one million, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars and thirteen cents.
Most approve.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's a consent docket. Would you please call for the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number sixteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. Item number seventeen is new business. Item A, citizen swarm for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Item B is items from the City Council or trustees. Okay, item C is items from the trust manager.
Mayor and council, just so you know, like we've done historically with the other sales tax initiatives, we will schedule meetings in each ward before Election Day. We'll have, have these scheduled in, in October, and we'll provide the dates when we, when we get them scheduled.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Item number eighteen is adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.